Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, May 21st, 2018. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller? Absent. Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Absent.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Why?
Present.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion second for approval?
No.
Moved by Councilman Why, second by Councilwoman Manti. Any discussion?
Yep. Mayor, I'll have to recuse myself from items 1D, 10, 11, and 12.
Noted. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. And this is the time when the public may come forward and talk about any issue, preferably not one that's on the agenda. So if you'd like to do that, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda.
Sub moved.
Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Albertson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is Spring Litter Blitz update. We have a member of the committee here to tell us about it.
Thank you for having us here. We've had another good year. It's been fun, and so the project ran from April 27th to May 7th, and we started with snow blizzards and all of that stuff that we've forgotten about. But I think everybody this spring had so many spring things to do when the weather got better that, you know, you can't all get them in. But I've, since I compiled these things, I've had a few more groups call me and say, hey, can we still do this? Can we do that? So it's all getting done. But there are a few that were not. So we had thirty-two, I think actually thirty-six groups and businesses participated. Several groups took two or three zones. Several individuals worked in more than two groups. Many groups have faithfully done this over the years, so we so appreciate that. And their new groups are added there, so that is a great thing, too. Number of workers this year was about 550. Total hours spent, thousand twenty-five. Bags of trash, 200 bags plus two pickups full by two different groups. And recycling bags, forty-five. We do like to try to recycle things that we find. Sometimes they're so dirty that we can't. But this is a community effort, and it's an ongoing effort. And we thank our partners, the mayor's office, the IT department, hooray! Chamber of Commerce for our 100 Watertown Bucks, which is going to be given away tonight. Watertown Area Community Foundation, where people can pick up the supplies. The Public Opinion, the Watertown Radio, and KXLG. So we thank those. Thank you for the sanitation and street department. They've set up the collection site, created a new sign for us this year. And thank you to these groups. The Boy Scouts are the ones that won a hundred dollar, or not won, they found a hundred-dollar bill and more last year. Every year, there seems to be a group that does this. The Care Group found a dead squirrel. Never know. Cub Scout Pack 239. This is hard work, but it is worth it, and they really made a difference. This is a new group. Thank you to the LLLs, their retired Lincoln teachers. They found a kickball. Great Western Bank made it a family affair. It's fun to do the, nice weather. See, it had some warm sunny days there. Oh, it was perfect. Dakota Bodies, I think they had a little competition to find beverage containers of all kinds. I couldn't put some of those pictures up, but they filled a pickup load. And United Methodist Youth. I think this was a learning opportunity for them and for other young people. A lot of the LAI, LATI students did a lot of things, and they learned that they don't like to pick up litter, so maybe they shouldn't drop so much. Dakota Bank did a great job. Some classy pictures there that they took and sent in. Kiwanis Club found a lot of plastic bottles and a lot of stuff. One of the people at LATI found a very dirty five-dollar bill. They washed it, kept it. Oh, yeah, it's washable, it's washable. Canon Darnall were out there. Third graders found some more balls. Persona found a cowhorn. They did a stretch of 212 out by where they were. Yogies and some cleaning, clean and greeners found a wheel cap and eyeglasses and other things. Rotary Club had a good time. Relia Bank found a debit card. When you clean up around your area, you find. And Watertown Ford found car parts. Well, I had to put the LLLs up again. I think they were the, I don't know what they call themselves, the Lazy Lincoln Ladies, but I think they're actually lovely Lincoln Ladies. There are coffee group that said, hey, let's go do this. And Zone One Zealots, they found long underwear. And just a thank you to all the others who didn't sign up but who just picked up. I've talked to a lot of people. So there's just a lot of opportunities for picking up litter and recycling. Reduce litter, put a litter bag in your vehicle, in each one. And just reduce, reuse, recycle. Watch for us maybe in the summer. Maybe we may be out at National Night Out and other events. And the winner of the 100 Watertown Bucks is, I'm just gonna let you look at another slide.
This can't be recycled. Glenn and Darnall.
That was fair. I did not look. All right.
Hopefully she's not watching, could sort of share it with her.
Just know that there is a city law against littering, and I don't know, maybe we could put some teeth into this. I think people have just forgotten that it's not a good idea to, you know, toss what you aren't using anymore. There's a place for it, and we got our phone cameras and take a picture. Anyway, let's all keep Watertown beautiful. Like us on Facebook. Thank you very much.
And that was Barb Brinkman, Chairwoman for the 2018 Spring Litter Blitz. Thanks, Barb. For the record, John Solom has arrived. Item number five is Ordinance Number 18-05, Amending Zoning District Boundaries by Rezoning a Portion of Outlot 6 of Willow Creek Village Edition. And just for the record, it's not Willow Creek Village Second Edition, it's just Willow Creek Village Edition. And I'm going to have Shane Waterman take this and a whole bunch of other items. This will be his first one of about 100 tonight. We're sending him out with a bang. Okay, so first of all, I would like to open the public hearing for this, and Shane, you can explain what it is.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezon of all that portion of Outlot 6 lying north of Second Avenue, which is depicted on my picture here on the bottom. And 22nd Street Southeast is the east boundary. The rezon does include the areas to the center line of the right-of-way. The previous zoning was R3, which was in accordance with their preliminary plan, and they wish to rezone it to R1 single-family residential. And the plan is to replat this, or plat this area with R1-sized lots. A couple of notable items on the Ordinance 1805 that you'll be voting on is the plat, it does require that a plat occur within one year of the council action tonight, and also that the ordinance will have no force in effect if such plat does not come forward. So this will revert back to R3 zoning if a plat is not brought forward and approved. So with that, I guess I'll leave it short and answer questions.
Okay. If anyone is in the audience that would like to speak on this issue, now is the time, so please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for council action. Is there a motion by Councilman Solom?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Manti. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is Ordinance Number 18-04, Amending Zoning District Boundaries by Rezoning a Portion of Prairie Hills Development Second Edition. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask Shane to describe this.
I apologize, this needs to be rotated, but let me, can you? Okay, we'll just look at it sideways here for a second. We did receive a petition to rezon portion of Outlot A of Prairie Hills Development Second Edition. The portion to rezone are these four lots along this boundary of Pompaska Drive, hatched in, and in blue. Those lots are proposed to be platted if, as RG Residential Garage District and not have residential structures on them. So right now, the developer is evaluating the wetland impacts that would be required here, and the final buildable areas on each of those lots would be determined by that wetland review. So with that, this is just a rezon to allow RG residential zoning. With that, I'll answer your questions.
Okay. And I should add that if this wetland business makes it such that they can't build on these lots, they'll probably just let it slide and they won't plat. And this rezon will be automatically rescinded if it's not platted within one year.
Yep.
So they are still studying that, right? They don't have the information back yet?
Correct.
On their wetland delineation. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about this? Now is the time to come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion and second for approval. Is there a motion?
A bunch of them.
Councilman Lalum, and second by Councilman Roby. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is Vacation of a Portion of 17th Avenue Southeast in the Interstate Office Edition, Resolution Number 18-21. And I would like to open the public hearing at this time, and I see Chris Shilken and Michelle Kokacek from Watertown Development Company are coming forward. Would you like to explain what this is about?
As you know, we have a major industrial expansion that will be happening, and the footprint of that building and their site plan makes it so they need a little more land than we have just in the eight pieces that are between 15th and 17th. So most of 17th is unfinished, so what we are wanting to do is vacate 17th Avenue Southeast. There would be a turnaround on the east side where it's, where it would dead-end at, and that would accommodate this large industrial project.
Thank you. Shane, do you want to add to that?
Yes, I would, Mayor, thank you. There are no substantial improvements on 17th Avenue, so we will not require any utility easements or any other encumbrances on this vacation. It would simply be a giving of the land back to the parent parcels as per codified law. But the gas main that is in that location is going to be converted to a private service, so there will be no public utilities involved with this.
Okay. And the Plan Commission has already considered this vacation request?
Correct. Yep.
And they've recommended approval. And they used a new checklist that we're just starting to use to be more methodical about how we evaluate vacations. And they specifically looked at the impact on public travel, the community betterment, impact on emergency services, and impact on city infrastructure, and found that there's really no harm in doing this, but we stand to gain a lot from a major development, which will be enabled by this vacation. So is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about this issue? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval.
I'll move. Second.
Moved by Councilman Albertson, second by Councilman Vilhauer. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
I'm guessing that that road has received very little travel or is used very little. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it's an unimproved road, so it, most people, when they get to the end of the paved portion, they turn around, and there's very little, we have very little traffic out in that area anyway.
I don't even think we plow snow in the winter. I think it just stays untouched.
Councilman Lalum?
That Mickelson Drive, you said that's gonna be a turnaround, Shane? That's what we're looking at on there?
Yeah, we're working out the details of a public turnaround here, similar to a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead-style turnaround that we've required in other recent additions.
That land to the south of that, is that privately owned still?
This, this lot right here will be part of a stormwater facility. These three lots here would become contiguous with the larger plan of the development.
How about the land to the south of that?
That is out in the county at this point.
Okay.
And we are in the process of getting that easement drafted for the turnaround in that, too, so that should be completed within the next week or so.
All right. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is Resolution of Necessity for 13th Avenue Southeast Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Number 1821, Resolution Number 18-20. And I will open the public hearing and ask Shane to give a description of this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The city staff has been working with the developer on this, a longtime development over a period of a decade or so. The street improvements, it was paved in approximately 2010 or 11, and prior to that, it was gravel and somewhat unimproved. The developer has come to the city to try to work out some issues in order for this development to be gifted, or the public improvements gifted over to the city for public use. Some of the deficiencies primarily are related to the sanitary sewer end of the project at this point. This little circle down here is a private lift station, and then the rest of the yellow route, or red route, excuse me, is the force main, also related to the sanitary lift station. And those facilities need to be improved in order to be accepted by the city. So we're, we have this project that will provide those improvements to bring it up to city standards so that we can accept it, and that's the goal of this project. And once that's done, we would anticipate being, having the avenue for the city to accept those improvements.
Okay, this was platted as a private road, and the owner would like to deed it over to the city as a public road. So is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about this? If so, now is your chance. Please come forward.
With that, we put the lift station and the road into city compliance as far as the roadwise lift station. We only do have one lift station now, but we'll bring that up to standards as far as the city goes. And the lift station, the road is curb and gutter on it.
Right.
Everything there, so.
Yes, and I know we did talk about this almost ten years ago, the city taking over, and the catch to it was the sanitary sewer wasn't built to city standards, so doesn't have SCADA, which is how
Yep.
we know at the sewer plant that there's a problem with the lift station.
Yep.
And so that needs to be installed and
Correct.
redone and pump and ability to hook in a generator and all that kind of stuff will happen. And then there have been some issues with freezing, that's why we're redoing the force main. The force main exists and was installed, but it's shallow, so it's subject to freezing. And so we'll be asking, we'll be installing it at a greater depth so that freezing isn't an issue. And then we should have a more standard facility that the city would be willing to accept.
Correct. Yep, and that's what we're, that's what we're accepting, so.
Yes, and the council did discuss this with the staff a few months ago, quite a few months ago, actually, maybe last summer or last fall, and directed the staff to move forward in figuring out what exactly would it take to make this an acceptable facility for the city.
Correct.
So it seems like it takes forever to do this stuff, but we're making some progress.
Sounds good.
Yes, all right. Is there anyone else that would like to say anything?
Do you have anything? Dead.
All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion and second for approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lalum, second by Councilman Why. Is there any discussion? Councilman Vilhauer?
There's just, just the one landowner that
No, there, there, I don't know how many there.
Yeah, I was just gonna actually add to that. We did receive a petition from all but one owner, landowner along this project, and it isn't our intention to assess these improvements to each individual owner based on their pro-rata share of their frontage. So that's the way this project is headed, and when we're done constructing the improvements, the assessments will follow in the fall and be, come before you to be ratified and moved on to the assessment rule.
The one that didn't sign, was that person unable to be contacted, or do they oppose?
Never heard anything.
Didn't hear anything from that person?
All return emails.
Okay. But they've had an opportunity, they received a certified letter?
Yes, all property owners got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine is Resolution of Necessity for 2018 Street Improvements Project Number 1801-D, Resolution Number 18-19. So I will open the public hearing and ask Shane to give us a description of this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Some recent developments in the industrial park to the southeast part of the town, just to give you a point of reference, it's Walmart, 14th Avenue Southeast, and then it converts into 15th Avenue Southeast. This is a small segment of 26th Street. This lot to the east is known as Lot 34, and that was recently purchased. And in order for the purchasers to get a building permit, we will need to improve 26th Street. Staff worked with the potential buyers and now owners and had discussed several options of how to move forward with the public improvements, and the consensus was that we do this by assessment. So again, this project's coming forward as an assessment project, and all three lots that, but this improved area will receive an assessment, and again, all landowners have been notified by notice, and so we've, we're moving forward with that. And as you noticed, in the consent agenda, we also asked for authorization to bid this project. So we're, we're preparing it for bidding, and then again, once it's constructed, the assessments will be calculated for each of the properties.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this issue? So please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for council action. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Manti, second by Councilman Lalum. Any discussion? Councilman Lalum?
Shane, on this road, does that also include sewer to be put in on that?
Yes, the improvements include a public, extension of public sanitary sewer, some storm sewer, curb and gutter, and street paving.
Okay.
And the private utility, I'll call it private, it's public, but water, the municipal utilities will install a water main, and then the develop, or will put in water and sewer services and assess those costs as well.
Will that be capped at the end of it for potential to go north with that road?
Yes, yes, we have that included in our design.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is Application for a Transfer of Ownership of a Retail On-Sale Liquor License with Sunday Liquor Sales and Video Lottery License from Scrappy Inc. Doing Business as Woody's Sports Bar and Casino at 1612 Ninth Avenue Southwest to Woody's Sports Bar LLC, Doing Business as Woody's Sports Bar LLC at the same location. I will open the public hearing and ask Kristen if there's anything else to say about this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just kind of briefly go over for 10, 11, and 12. 10 and 11 will be your transfer of ownerships, and number 12 will be, because it is the time for the malt beverage renewal. Item 12 is to renew that for the period of the July 1st, 2018 to June of 2019, so, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer and second by Councilman Solom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 11 is Application for a Transfer of Ownership of a Retail On-Off Sale Malt Beverage License from Scrappy Inc. Doing Business as Woody's Sports Bar and Casino at 1612 Ninth Avenue Southwest to Woody's Sports Bar LLC, Doing Business as Woody's Sports Bar LLC at the same location. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak about this. Please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval. Moved by Councilman Why. Second by Councilman Thorson. Any discussion? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just have a question. We, in our packet, we always see the information for the transferee. I'm guessing there's paperwork that, that somebody from the transferor side must sign off as far as okaying the transfer? We just see the one side all the time. I'm guessing there's something from the other side that gets signed off on as well, or is this, this it?
No, our office does receive, I think, I don't know the exact name of it, but it's an affidavit from the other. it's an affidavit from the other. Yeah, so there's two sides.
That's a relief. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is renewal of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Woody's Sports Bar LLC doing business as Woody's Sports Bar LLC at 1612 Ninth Avenue Southwest. Look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Manti. Second by Councilman Lalum. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 13 is consideration of a request by Thomas Carnival to use the city-owned parking lot next to County Fair from Thursday, May 23rd, 2018 through Monday, May 28th, 2018, and setup will begin on the 23rd. Shane, could you bring this up on your screen? Can you zoom in on that? Okay, this is the same location that has been used in years past, and you can see it's behind County Fair, and they block off half of the street, Third Street Southeast, or Northeast, excuse me, between the senior center and then the city-owned parking lot there will be used. And those red dots are barricades that they, they can let vehicles through, but in general they close it off, just like they normally do. So I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Y. Second by Councilman Danforth. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Y.
So half of the road will be blocked off that'll still allow
Yes.
People to get in and out of the senior center?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't think there's a lot of traffic driving through there, but they wanted to leave it open for emergency vehicles and whatnot, and then plenty of room for people to come in and out of the senior center driveway. Councilman Lalum?
Does the city receive anything on this, or is this something that we do as a public event type deal?
We, yes, the city does not receive any payment or anything. We, we grant permission, and it's, you know, it's a public fun time.
Sounds good.
Councilman Roby?
I sent a reason to not accept this or to deny it, but why did we get the notice two days before it's ready to go? Just in case there was something that came up.
Can't answer that. I think it's been the same folks requesting it every year, so I don't know, it'll be my first time doing this. Councilman Vilhauer?
I, I know a number of years ago when I sat on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, that there had been some concerns expressed by some of the downtown business owners about use of their restrooms, different facilities, I mean, if we had, and this is probably six, seven, eight years ago. Any issues that have come up in, in recent years along those lines that anybody's aware of?
I'm not aware
Okay.
Of any.
Okay.
So, that's a good question to ask, though. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 14 is acceptance of the South Dakota Department of Transportation Traffic Study for the intersection of Highway 81 and Kemp Avenue and to proceed with removal of the traffic signal at that intersection. So I will look for a motion and second for approval of the acceptance. Moved by Councilman Lalum, second by Councilwoman Manti. And Shane, would you like to just summarize what we learned from the DOT? And this came with a recommendation from the public board.
Yeah, this has been kind of an ongoing process throughout the discussion of the conversion of Kemp and First Avenue Southeast in the downtown district to convert them from one-way to two-way. Ultimately, the conversion of Kemp is the second street to happen, and one of our biggest concerns was the impact of the intersection of Highway 81 and Kemp Avenue throughout the process. And so we reached out to the DOT to make sure that they were comfortable with the traffic movements through that intersection if we were to convert it. And one of the ideas was is that if we wanted to upgrade everything to standards, we would have had a substantial improvement project at that intersection that would have been born mostly at city's cost. The rough estimate was a quote, close to $250,000, and, and when it really boiled down to it, the discussions led to, do we even need this signal? Because the DOT did consider removing the signal a number of years ago when they redid that portion of Highway 81. That project ultimately was not followed through at that time, but, so they redid the study. The study indicated that we should not have any impacts to the intersection and traffic flow that would be significant, and they looked at the 20-year timeline, and traffic patterns should function well. And, and so then the only concern was pedestrian crossings, and we're looking at with the DOT putting in a, what they call a HOCC system, which is a special crossing system for pedestrians. And once that's implemented, this intersection should be as safe as any along Highway 81.
The Department of Transportation takes any kind of change of traffic control very seriously, and they are data-driven folks. They, they don't do anything that isn't warranted, and so they would not move forward with any project without studying it. And they did study this, and they found that there is no negative impact to removing the signal at Kemp and Highway 81. There actually might be some benefit to it, so we think this is not a bad thing to do, so we'll be moving forward with that. They're just waiting for our acceptance of their study. The council has already acted on this to change the, the road back to two-way. So this is just an acceptance of the DOT modeling and recommendation, so that's what we're doing right now. Is there any other discussion or questions? Councilman Roby?
I would just reiterate what the engineers said at our last meeting, they're gonna leave the light there for a while. They're not gonna pull it out right away, they're gonna leave the light in, they're gonna test it and verify and validate what they thought.
Thank you for adding that. They'll put it in flash mode, and so it'll gradually ease out, and if we have a big impact on the traffic that wasn't anticipated with their modeling, they can reevaluate. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 15 is the first reading of ordinance number 18-07, amending zoning district boundaries by zoning Mansell addition southeast of Sandy Shores to R1 Single Family Residential District. There's no action required here, but Shane, do you want to say a few words about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city did receive a petition for annexation, and come, what comes with that is zoning, so this being the first reading, there's no action as the mayor had mentioned, but they did petition to be brought into the city, and with that, of course, comes other city things that they'll have to be connecting to municipal water, they'll have to connect to sanitary sewer, and of course, their taxation and zoning district will change. They're proposing to R1 Single Family Residence. We do anticipate the potential of a plat to split this into two parcels, so they'll have another buildable, right? Another item that we're working on with them that will come with this annexation and zoning is a park dedication, and, and that type of issues are going before the park board at their next meeting at the end of May. So that's where we're at right now, and you'll, you'll have more information when the second reading comes forward.
And this was recommended by the plan commission?
Yes, yep, correct.
And I see there's a neighbor in the audience, did you want to say something?
I can't, Mayor.
If, if you'd like to just come and state your name, the microphone?
I'm Ron DeVille. I live at 1062 South Lake Drive, right across where this property's going to be annexed. There's a few of us against this. We've, it's quite a wildlife area, and so we're, we're concerned about that. We're concerned about that channel that goes through there. Who is gonna be controlling that part? It's on the, on the east end of that, of that, that land right there. Now, I live on, I handle the, the lakeside of that channel, I have culvert in there, and I've, I've built spillway and all this, this sort of thing. But we've, we're just, we're against it because it's a wildlife area, there's a lot of wildlife activity there. We looked at it when, when, what's he gonna do when he puts the utilities in there, and this is what's our concern? And being a doctor, you know what's gonna happen, he's gonna build a big house in there. Kurt's house now is up for sale again, so that utilities is not, isn't for that purpose. Ducks, geese, weasels, they don't need utilities. So we're looking at, we're gonna have an eyesore in there. That channel over there, we get a lot of fish that go through there. I talked to the Isaac Walton people, and they're, they're, they're talking someday have that Toby Slue as a rearing area for, for fish to, to go into Lake in Pesca, they're, you know, everybody's talking about big ideas, but where's, where's the money coming from? Well, we already have a culvert in there. There's a lot of fish move through there, rough fish and, and, and game fish. Now, this ends on the, I'm thinking on the west end of that, or on the east end of that, or the west side of that, that ditch there, that canal. That canal handles all the water, well, it goes into Toby Slue first, but all the way to the curves. That flows into Toby Slue. If the lake's up high, it runs into Toby Slue. If the, if the lake's down, the Toby Slue runs into the, into the lake. So it's, it's a, it's, it's, it has to stay there. Now, who's gonna control that? Is, if water, if you're nexus, is Watertown gonna handle one side and the county the other, or how's that gonna happen? That's another one of our concerns. I, last Tuesday, I went to a county commissioners' meeting, and Chairman Myron Johnson there, he turned it over to the, says he's gonna turn it over to the zoning and the planning board in the county, so I don't, I don't know where that's at right now. So we're, we're getting some opposition, it's just that we're, we're just, we don't think it's, that it should be turned over to the city, it should stay in the county. Let's see, anything else? I, that'd be about it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
A couple of questions, Ron. The culvert and the canal, is there an easement that's associated with that, or how did that ever get in there? And, and how was it planned for to be a perpetual source for moving water?
Well, back, back when that, that road, South Lake Drive was Highway 212, way, way back when, there's a box culvert in there, and it was an open ditch as long as I can remember. We've, we've lived out there since that, my folks had the Sunnyside since 51, and we moved in this area here in 1958. It was an open ditch. Well, we were, I had kids. Fella, fella, fell off of there, broke his shoulder, we're just even with the, with the road. And it was, it was a, to me, it was getting to be a hazardous type deal, so I went to the county, they didn't want to do anything, the farmer didn't want to do anything, so I filled it up full of clay. That got their attention. The next year, that, the water couldn't get out of there, so it came right up to the edge of the road. So then the county got, finally got excited, and they opened up that ditch, we put in a culvert, and then I did the, did the rest there as far as the spillway into the lake and, and all that. So it's, it's, it's been there forever. So it's, and it, as far as surface-wise, that's really the only one left that's, that's, that connects Toby Slue to the lake. There's probably underground areas there, but it's just there. But Councilman Vilhauer, we talked about maybe doing something with an easement on my side. That culvert is, is disintegrating, it's, it's rusting out. We thought maybe we could put a sleeve in there or something. I have concrete over the top of it and everything, so the only way you're gonna get at it is just put a sleeve in there. On the, on the county side over there, there's a small culvert that, that they put in to extend it a little farther away from the road. But that's all that's ever been done to that.
What size are those? And I'm assuming they're corrugated metal pipe?
It's, it's, can I just, it's about this big.
Thirty-six inch.
The culvert, the culvert, yeah, so it's, it's, I, we can crawl down it, you know, when it's dry. Mayor, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I got another question if I could.
Go down forth.
Ron, whether this is in the city or whether this is in the county, that, we're talking about the Hatch area, correct?
Yes.
Whoever owns this, which is Dr. Mansell, right? He could build a big house on there anyway, right? There's nothing that he could do, nothing that he could do when it's in the city that he couldn't do if it's in the county.
I agree, yes.
I mean, so there really is, there are no change, it's just a matter of which governing body is, is gonna be the one that controls it.
That's not entirely true. You, you need, it's got one lot, it's got one house on it, it would have to be subdivided in order to build a second house.
He could tear that house down, he could sell it, he could add a great big addition on. My point is, is you could do all of those things that you referenced anyway.
See, there's
Even if it stays in the county.
Yes, there's an area east of Kurt's and Mary Lou's house that, the original, or the house that went with that lot. It's big enough to, or big enough lot in there to build a big house in there, and, but Mary, their house is for sale again. He's got, Dr. Mansell, he's, he has that up for sale now. So the only thing I can see is he's just thinking down the road that, I mean, it's just something that I'm kinda, hasn't been my first rodeo, I guess, so I, I figured that the only thing, only reason he wanted the sewer and water and all that is, is to put another house in there, and, and they big, build big houses, and it's just, wildlife is, it's been a wildlife kind of area forever, and by doing this, you know, we're gonna lose some of that. Talking about a couple of examples of wildlife, when my kids were growing up, two weasels came into our house, you know, and gonna stay, we, we got rid of them. Last December, I had a care package from my daughter, and there was a piece of salami in there, and I came out, and the box is all tore to heck, and this is during the day, and this piece of salami is laying across the road, a coyote got into it. So there's wildlife there, there's, we have snapping turtles, we have skunks, we have all these different critters out there. Now, where are a lot of that, where are they gonna go? You know, because they're not gonna stick around there. We have a deer population in there now, on the island, and, and the ducks and the geese, you know, they're just, and it complements the lake, too, because they fly back and forth, you're getting to see wildlife movement, you know, or you're, you keep building on these, on the, on these, these types of properties, and you're, you're gonna eliminate a lot of that. So, that's, that's our concern. Lauren Berg, Kurt's brother, we call him Toby, Toby Slue, and we call him Toby, he's against it. My brother David is against it, I'm against it, and there's a lot of people that are, that are, I'm hearing that are against it, you know, because we, we gotta keep some wildlife area. So, but like you say, you know, if you build a house, I can't say they can't.
Would you be in favor of the city purchasing that to be designated as a wildlife area and spending tax dollars?
It'd be alright with me, you know, if they could keep it a wildlife area.
We, I mean, the same argument could be made for virtually any area that we annex that isn't developed yet. This one does have some very special features, I agree with you completely, and it would be And it would be, um, we need to enhance the fishery in Lake Impeska. And this is a prime spot to do that for spawning. It's a protected area which is directly connected. And I think that we can make conditions upon the plat. And, I mean, we can even preserve shore areas and restrict building to certain areas. I mean, that, the city council has the ability to make those restraints on a property. And I hesitate though to just not allow someone to annex because it has wildlife on it. Almost every other place does too. Your place did before it was built on. And it, I mean, any place before it's developed is habitat. And this is a very nice area, so I, I get why you wanna preserve it. I think that, um, it deserves to be protected. And maybe there's a compromise in there somewhere, I don't know. But the, the plan commission did recommend approval of this. And it will go before the park board next, I think, before it comes back to the city council for action. Because there, there is a park dedication requirement that goes along with an annexation. And with that park dedication, you know, we, we can look at lots of different things for wildlife habitat and, and that sort of thing. So, are there other questions, Councilman Willhauer?
Since the planning commission has rec, has approved this or recommended approving this, does that mean it would take a super majority in our part then to, to overturn that or to change that? I'm not sure to address Matt or whoever.
I'd have to double check on that.
Okay.
If it's an approval, the approval would be in line and fail to approve doesn't require a super majority. An approval would require a super majority, right? If it's against the council or the plan commission.
Right. If you try to overturn whatever decision came out of the plan commission, it would take a super majority, as I understand it.
If you're proposing to approve it, that you'd have to phrase it negatively in order for it to be requiring a super majority idea.
I guess we'll just need to make sure.
Correct.
We'll have to do a little homework on that before the vote comes.
Ron, can I ask? I'm not arguing with, with your opposition to this. It sound like you've got a fair amount. But, but I, I watched the planning commission meeting for a second time today. I mean, there, nobody came to speak against it at the planning commission.
Well, I, uh, I was gonna, gonna go there and I got talking to some people. They said, "Well, you really don't have to be there." In fact, I ended up watching it on TV, so that's why I didn't show up. I was gonna, gonna go to that, but it was...
And also, the, the Mansells own the property immediately to the east of that. Is that a correct statement? There's no plans to do anything with that at this point?
That's right up to Lawrence's property. They're, they own it all east. That's just still all-
Okay.
Yeah, they're not, at this time, not gonna do anything with that, that I know of.
Any other comments? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, Mayor, I think going with, you know, I get the, I get the catch 22 here. And I know we're only in the, the first reading on this. But, you know, I look at some of the other things that we've done around the community and certainly around the lake where we have, I mean, we just did one tonight where, for Dennis Arnold in that area. That's a wetland area. So, I, I think it puts us in a very dangerous precedent to be the holders of the wildlife if that's, A, not our responsibility and if there aren't, if there aren't, um, regulations or laws that prohibit us from doing our, what we're doing. Because there are landowner rights that we need to respect. And, you know, if this needs to be preserved, it should've been bought and preserved some time ago. And Ron, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm a wildlife guy. But I'm, but I also am very concerned about land ownership and the rights of landowners.
Yeah, I understand that.
And that's where I'm coming from. So, I just think it's a very dangerous precedent that would get set, to, to disallow this for that reason, if there was not some law or something that drove us to make that decision. I think it'd be a very, very serious scenario, I think.
Right. And, and if the council wanted to, um, preserve as much as possible, they could ask for an easement area for the wetland and, and up toward the top. A lot of fill will have to be brought in here to raise this up high enough to be above the floodplain. And so, I mean, you have that ability as a council to recommend that it be limited to a certain area or something along those lines in order to protect a sensitive area. Any other comments?
Can I just, I'll ask you and Shane this question. But the, the drainage from between the lake and Toby Slough, if there are no easements for that, is that something that needs to get looked into to determine if it should be a-
We would be asking for an easement on this property.
To maintain that.
That doesn't do us any good for the other side of the road. But with plating, that would be the time that we would ask for an easement.
We would look, we would want to maintain that, I'm assuming.
Well, well, we'd wanna at least protect it and require its maintenance. And that's another conversation.
Right.
There's lots of these pipes that the city does not own or maintain, but has easements over so that they can't remove it, they can't build on the top of it, that sort of thing. They can't plug it. Without an easement, we're to the, back to the South Dakota law, which says you can't block a drainage, an established drainage path. So, that's kinda all we would have. It's pretty weak, but it's something, better than nothing. All right?
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time, yep.
The next item is number 16. First reading of ordinance number 18-06, amending zoning district boundaries by zoning all of place addition to R1 Single Family Residential District. And Shane, you wanna tell us about this one?
Thank you, Mayor. On the screen is the area hatched in gray, proposed to be zoned R1. Again, this property is in the, currently in the county, proposed to be annexed. And along with annexation comes zoning. And as we discussed with the prior, um, element, it also talks, we have to talk about all the other municipal items such as water service, sewer service, and related infrastructures like sidewalks and roads. So, that's all in the discussion process right now with city staff. At this point in time, it is first reading on, with regard to the zoning. And second reading with regard to zoning would come with the annexation at a future date. And again, we are taking the park dedication element to the upcoming park board for discussion, so.
Okay. I'd like to point out where this is. It's 14th Avenue North and Second Street West. And that round circle is the water tower on 14th Avenue North. This is entirely surrounded by city limits on all sides. It's the last little remnant where the tree farm business used to be before it moved. Are there any questions or discussion about this? All right, no action required. Item number 17 is authorization for the mayor to sign a joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks regarding the shooting range project number 16-19. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is related to item on the consent agenda where we made a ward for the shooting range project 1619. This is the formal agreement that will be enacted upon council action with the Game Fish and Parks, which establishes the cost share of the project and also the ongoing maintenance, which the city will be responsible for. But essentially, the agreement boils down to where the Game Fish and Parks grant will cover most of the costs of the project. The project was just shy of $365,000. And approximately $91,000 of that would become the ultimate cost of the city, which is an enormous savings to the, to the community. And we're getting a great benefit for that project. So, again, the recommendation is to award or approve this, um, document so that the city benefits from that.
Okay, thank you. So, the, the city will pay 100% of the project cost upfront and will be reimbursed by the state. That's part of what this agreement says. And then it says that the city will maintain it for a period of at least 25 years, which is considered to be the life of it. And with maintenance, we can extend the lifetime of the facility. And then the agreement goes down to describe what maintenance is, what, what is expected so that, um, it's, there's no confusion about what the city is accepting as a, an obligation in maintaining this facility and who to contact. So, I would like a motion for approval of the authorization for me to sign this in a second. Okay. Moved by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilwoman Manti. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Uh, two questions. First one probably is a Kristin thing. But from a, in the end, we'll be responsible for 25% or about $91,000, whatever it is. How does that other 75% that, you know, that we'll be funding upfront? How does that work within the budget process? Funds, I'm assuming funds are available to do this and get reimbursed.
I believe in the 2018 budget, there was, I think it was $450,000 covered the actual gun range itself and $75,000 was for the driveway. So, there's definitely enough funds, especially with how the bid came in, to do this project. But yes, the city, in most grant situations, we do exactly this. We budget for the whole project 'cause we usually pay it and then we receive reimbursement. So, then the reimbursements will go back into Fund 212.
Second question is, what happens at the end of 25 years? I know it references in several locations in the document that it, it's for the lifetime estimated at 25 years. What happens on the 26th year? Is it, does the agreement just go away and we do whatever we want?
We can do something else with that land if we would choose it's city land. And since the state is funding 75% of this, they're asking that we keep it in this use for a period of at least 25 years.
Okay.
After that, they don't care if we wanna-
Then whatever happened, happened after that, it's up to us. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 18 is authorization for the mayor to sign the local government certification form in the State of South Dakota Emergency Solutions Grant Application for the Beacon Center. I saw this was up on the screen a moment ago. We had a presentation from the Beacon Center at the Finance Committee meeting and the Finance Committee recommended approval of signing this form. It isn't necessary for the council to authorize me to sign this form, but it's a gesture that we do support what the Beacon Center does. They provide a very important service to our community. It's, it's a shelter for men, women, and children. And it's a, a very critical thing for a community to have. And, and we're lucky to have such a nice facility. It's, it is very nice. It's not at all rundown. It's, it's, it's actually very beautiful and well-run and clean. And there are activities for people to do. It's just a really great, safe place for people in our community who need it. So, I am enthusiastically going to sign this. I would like your, um, recommendation for me to sign it. Moved by Councilwoman Albertson, second by Councilwoman Willhauer. Any discussion? See none, I'll look for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 19 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Protec Roofing for a new roof at Station 1 on Original Truck Room Bay only in the amount of $25,780. And I'll look for a motion second for that. Moved by Councilwoman Lalum, second by Councilwoman Y. And I see Doug Kranz, the fire chief, is here to tell us about this.
Thank you. So, the, this is Station 1 downtown. You see the middle section there? That was actually the old Truck Room Bay, I think, built in 1960. We did a total remodel on the inside of that. And in 2013, when we built on the other two sections, the outer sections, that roof was not replaced, just the rooftop because of the fact that it, I think it was last done in 1998 or something like that. So, we felt it had a few years left in it. And so, that's why we held it at that time in 2013. So, it's been a, an additional good five years since. You'll notice the air conditioner setup on top of that. Also, on the one side, there's a egress door, roof access, right, right about there. So, with that being said, we, we've been working on this project for a couple of years to get a, some roof quotes and stuff. So, we ended up getting two quotes. We have money in our budget this year, in our CIP budget, for a new roof on this. We worked with a local contractor. Did get a, a couple of different options on that quote. And the one we're recommending is just to go with the base rate on, with Protec Roofing, a local company. We did go out and get an additional second quote from an outside, outside of Watertown company. And the, the second quote did come in at $180 cheaper than Protec Roofing. But with the local contractor that serviced our, our buildings, I, I guess my recommendation is for the $180 to go with the, the local contractor.
All right. Is there any discussion? Councilman Lalum?
Hey, Chief, are we looking at alternate one, alternate two on that or?
Yeah, a good question. So, we're just taking the, the first, the first base price. Because one is actually for additional R value, which we have a very good utility rate on that building and that lower truck room really heats easy. So, there's good R value there. The second part is actually to put a, a little bit more of a slope on it. And we didn't feel it, the contractor didn't feel that was necessary either 'cause of the fact that we got good drainage on it already, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, you stay put, Doug. The next item on the agenda, number 20, is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Glacier Lakes Energy, Magellan Pipeline, and Watertown Fire Rescue for a foam trailer partnership agreement. I'll look for a motion second and then we'll discuss it. Moved by Councilwoman Manti and second by Councilman Lalum. All right, Doug, you wanna tell us about this?
Yeah, so, we have a unique partnership that we've been looking at for, for a while since, since Glacier Lakes has built on their new tank farm and, and added production out there. They were looking into a foam trailer. So, what they did is, uh, as you notice, uh, the city of Watertown doesn't currently own a foam trailer with the fire department. So, we don't have a lot of need for it, but occasionally, there's a, there is a need for a foam trailer. And what a foam trailer is, anytime you have a large fluid spill with a, with a hydrocarbon type product, we'll put a big blanket of foam down for vapor suppression on this. So, keeps the vapors down, keeps it from igniting or will actually put out a fire because it controls vapors. So, we would use that occasionally, but we don't have enough need for it to have a foam trailer on our own. So, Magellan also did not have a foam trailer at their facility. So, we worked out a three-way partnership agreement where, where the, I'm sorry, Glacier Lakes has purchased the foam trailer and the foam. They're responsible for the, the product, housing it and maintaining it, the, the product. Magellan has purchased some equipment for Watertown Fire Rescue, some application equipment to put this foam down if we ever need it. So, with the mayor signing into this agreement, the foam trailer will stay out there and be their responsibility for the maintenance. And then the, the application equipment that was donated to Watertown Fire Rescue will be on our, our fire trucks to put the foam down. And so, we have the 24 hour, 24 hour access to this foam trailer if we would have a tanker spill in, in our fire district as well as Magellan and stuff. So, it's just a three-way working agreement, so we all don't have to buy a separate foam trailer, so.
This is really a, a unique and good agreement for us. Yes, it's really a, a great deal for all three parties. Everyone benefits and everyone contributes. Everyone benefits and everyone contributes, and, um, plus, our own city attorney, Matt Robey, now will probably be copied all over the country when other people try to do this cool thing too. So.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Matt. Uh, he, he did put a lot of work into, to getting this, uh, ironed out and stuff. The other nice benefit is, uh, we're able to use this foam trailer and work, uh, in both facilities out there and doing training and stuff and making sure that, uh, we're ready for the incident, uh, that, that comes before, so.
Yeah, this is a great partnership. So thank you. Any discussion or questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Doug. Councilman Lalum?
Yeah. Doug, I'd just like to thank you and your staff for our Fire Ops 101 that a few of us went to the other day. Uh, it was very enjoyable and very interesting to go through that. So just wanted to give you guys a, a thank you, because I, I truly enjoyed myself, and I think, uh, John and Josh did as well. So we thank you, and if you'd pass it on to your staff, we, we truly did appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. It was a lot of fun, and sign us up again.
Yeah. I, I was really sorry to miss it, but I got a pretty personalized tour ahead of time, because I wasn't going to be there, and saw what a great job you guys do out at the, um, the airport fire station. And by the way, as long as we're giving kudos out, the, um, FAA is, was recently in town, um, looking at our airport operations, and I asked them what the, um, what our greatest strength at our airport is of things that they review. And the, without hesitation, the inspector said, "Your airport fire rescue facility is fantastic, and it's extremely well-run." So, "Good job, fire department."
Thank you.
We're lucky. Item number 21 is approval of alcohol consumption at Bramble Park Zoo on June 22nd, 2018, for the Zoo Fari fundraiser. And I will look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Lalum. And I think we have someone here to talk about that. Jamie, would you like to tell us about Zoo Fari? Jamie Strickus from the zoo. This is kinda your baby, isn't it?
It is. Thank you. Zoo Fari is an event we've been doing. This will be the fifth year that we will have the event. And the zoo closes at 3:00 that Friday to the general public, so we can kinda turn it around for the fundraiser. And it's a 21 and over-only event.
Great. Okay. Is there a motion second for approval? Moved by, oh, did I already do that? Already did it. Never mind, never mind. Sorry. How about discussion? Any questions for Jamie or discussions?
Jamie, uh, so this is a 21 and over event, but, uh, do you also have a family event then as well?
On Saturday. So Friday is adults only, and then Saturday we do the same thing, minus the drinks. And so people can bring their families back. And if you purchased a ticket for Friday night, that would also get you in for Saturday. So a lot of people will come to the evening event and say, "I think my kids would have a great time at this," and then we'll see them again on Saturday.
Councilman Lalum?
Jamie, what time does that thing run till?
6:00 to 9:30.
6:00 to 9:30. Okay. That gives you time to clean up and everything?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a contingency for weather, or is there rain or shine?
No, it's kinda rain or shine. It's so hard, because we have different cultural booths that come and set up. And right now, we're at 15 different cultural stations, plus four different entertainment acts, and it's just too much to set a rain date for, so just pray it's nice weather.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. I think you're good to go.
We didn't yet. We were waiting for approval, so.
Now you have it.
Thank you.
All right, item number 22 is authorization for the Plan Commission to initiate investigation and analysis of Tax Incremental Financing District Number 7. Um, I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Lalum. Um, Matt, would you please explain what this is about?
Yes, so this, uh, is not actually statutorily required to take this action. Previous city attorney, Vince Foley, had recommended that, uh, this be, uh, he, as he put it, a belt and suspenders type of action, where we, uh, the city council formally tasked the planning commission with the, uh, uh, the task of investigating the, uh, the TIF process. Uh, the WDC is here too, and they may be able to input anything, if anybody has any questions. But I believe at this time, we're just waiting for some information from Terex, um, for this to go forward.
So Tax Incremental Financing District will be, um, for the benefit of the, the new Terex facility. I, I don't know what, what are the boundaries of the district proposed to be? Do we know that? Michelle and Chris, do you guys wanna?
Well, our, our office, Tracy and our office, has been working on drafting a entire TIF plan that is now with Toby Morris, just to, for him to take a look at it, that will define the boundaries of that. It will be in that area, will encompass that entire project area.
And just basically the footprint of the Terex project?
Um, the, and the surround, their whole footprint of the land that they will have, yes.
Okay, yeah. Their, their property.
Yeah, their property.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
So, so in the end, Mayor, this will be purely a Terex TIF here then, correct? TIF-related, or a Terex-related TIF?
There will be some public improvement work in that area as well. There will be the, the finishing off the road there. There will be some drainage improvements there that will be for the benefit of that entire industrial park, so.
But there won't be any adjoining lots that would be sold out to anybody?
No.
Ultimately, it would be, okay.
Yeah, it would be just that.
I think it's beneficial to have this action by the council to kick it off, um, and, and state a consciousness of the process starting, which starts with the Plan Commission. So at least the council knows it's going on, and it's an opportunity to ask questions, um, before it gets too far along. Councilman Vilhauer?
I guess I've got a question. This is going to the Planning Commission. What's gonna come back to us then? I mean, then this has already been pretty well decided that this TIF is gonna go forward relative to Terex. But I'm a little bit confused on what we're doing here.
Well, it, it was proposed in the original, um, proposal for the project, and then you have to go through the process to make sure that it meets all the needs financially. There's some cost-benefit stuff that we're waiting on, final project costs. Gets approved by the State Department of Revenue, then gets final approval by, just to make sure that it, I suppose, cash flow, for lack of a better word, but.
Right. It's a pretty big project, and there are a lot of moving parts. And you have to discuss all these things before it actually comes together. And it's just recently coming together, so step by step, we're crossing all the Ts.
And we had to wait on certain, um, points and, and project costs before we could submit the application, so that's why it's coming after a little bit.
Right. Any other, Councilman Albertson?
So this isn't passing the buck to the Plan Commission?
Oh, no, it will come back to you.
Yeah.
There's, there's an established process that we need to follow, and it includes the Plan Commission.
Okay.
So this is just acknowledgement that the process has begun. Other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 23 is authorization for the mayor to sign South Dakota DOT Work Order for Consulting Services for the 2018 Bridge Inspections. Um, and I'll look for a motion second, then we'll have some discussion. Moved by Councilwoman Manti. Second by Councilwoman Thorson. Okay. Shane, will you explain what this is, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On March 19th of 2018, the council passed a resolution 18-10 that, um, essentially the state requires the city to commit to being included in the, um, participation for the bridge inspection project, which happens annually. So this document here is the culmination of that effort to be part of the DOT Bridge Inspection for 2018, and it is essentially the agreement between the city, the DOT, and the consultant, so.
And the consultant is Infrastructure Design Group.
Correct. That's who we chose in that resolution, 18-10.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 24 is authorization for the mayor to sign an engineering agreement with Infrastructure Design Group in the amount of $23,910.70 for the sanitary sewer improvements on Highway 212, Project Number 1802. Look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, and second by Councilwoman Manti. All right, Shane, you wanna tell us about this?
Thank you. Ray, will you put my screen up on the, on the screen? The, uh, South Dakota DOT informed us when they did their final bridge, uh, review and inspection that the, the proposed bridge that they're gonna replace over the Big Sewer River here on Highway 212, when they're piling, driving their pilings that are required for the new structure, they're concerned about the existing 21-inch concrete sewer main, which is essentially located where the blue line is on this drawing. And, uh, in doing so, then, they've recommended that the city relocate that sanitary sewer line. And this is kinda the 11th hour of the whole process of approving the design work for Highway 212. So with that, I, Infrastructure Design Group assisted the Watertown Municipal Utilities on reviewing their plans for the water main upgrade for this same project area. So with that, we thought that there was an advantage in requesting a proposal from Infrastructure Design Group then to also help the city proper with the relocation of the sanitary sewer. So this short-form agreement is the culmination of that discussion and effort, so that we can move forward with the design and ultimately construction of this. And the proposal includes construction late fall of this year, so that we're ready in advance of the beginning of the DOT construction project next spring. So, any questions? I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions or discussion? See none. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Shane. I think that was your last item ever.
I don't know, we got old business and new business yet.
Maybe that'll be something else. Item number 25 is Resolution of Intent to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with ATY Aviation for Fixed Base Operator Services at the Watertown Regional Airport. This is Resolution Number 18-24, and I would, um, like a motion second for approval, and then we'll discuss. Moved by Councilman Solom, second by Councilman Lalum. Um, and we have a couple of people here. I know Todd Sire, the airport manager, and, um-
I'm John Yost.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Uh, future owner.
Okay.
Uh, so John came with today, uh, to kinda just explain who he is and what he's about. Uh, he's looking to purchase the FBO, uh, the fixed-based operator out at the airport. Uh, last year, One Vision bought the FBO and is now selling it to, uh, Mr. Yost. Uh, it'll be called ATY Aviation. Uh, he wanted to kinda keep a local name, which I thought was neat. So, John, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, uh, this is my wife, Brenda. Um, she has a degree in accounting, and she'll be out at the office, uh, every day. And my oldest son, Brandon, uh, he's a commercial pilot, instrument-rated, multi-engine, and, uh, licensed aerial applicator. We all three, our youngest son, Ross, and, uh, also is a commercial pilot, uh, instrument-rated, with his, uh, working on his CFI, Certified Flight Instructor's Rating. Excuse me. Brandon, uh, went to Lake Area Tech out here, and he's an aircraft mechanic too. Uh, Ross is a junior at SDSU, and, and he's looking forward to, or he's been a junior, he's a senior now, I guess. Um, but he's gonna get his rating and, and, uh, his instructor rating, and plans on doing his flight instruction down there and then helping us when he's done with that. And, and as far as me, I went to school here at Lake Area back in, uh, 85, I got out. And, uh, my wife and I got married in 84, met her here in Watertown, so it's kinda like coming home. I learned to fly, started learning to fly here and finished up in Rapid City. But yeah, I've been in aviation ever since, um, aircraft mechanic, uh, pilot, um, commercial, and instrument, multi, uh, aerial applicator. So what I've been doing for the past several years, and my brother has a business doing that out at Hayes, South Dakota, so I got involved with him, uh, in 2003. But, um, we had a, uh, FBO in Iowa for, let's see, it's from 1996 to 2003. And then I got into aerial application, but I've still been engaged with, with aircraft maintenance, and, um, I was the director of maintenance, actually, out here at, at the airport for, uh, one of the operators for six years, um, from '03 to 2009, I believe, somewhere near. But, uh, so yeah, we, we're excited about it. I've always been intrigued with the airport. It's a nice airport. It's a nice community. Um, we're excited about getting to work there. Um, I'm gonna be a little bit spread thin this next couple of months with the, I have some obligations with the spraying that I gotta finish up, but I'll be here as much as I, as I can. My wife will be here full-time, and, and, um, once we kinda get through. I, I didn't intend on this happening. It just kinda showed up. And, uh, and we're excited about it, and it's, um, both my wife and I discussed it at length before we decided to do this. And so, yeah, we're wanting to get flight instruction going again, and, and maintenance is a big thing. I've been doing maintenance for a long time. I've been an authorized inspector with the FAA since 1990. So I'll do, been involved with all aspects of that, from repair work to major repairs and exporting and importing aircraft. We did that out of Europe for years. So yeah, we got, we got a lot of background in aviation is what we do, and, and, uh, we see a beautiful facility on a nice airport, and we're excited about making it busy again.
Excellent.
It's our plan.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you all.
Yeah, likewise.
Yes, Councilman Robey.
Uh, Todd, would you just kind of lay out the relationship or the differences between the new group, ATY, and One Vision? So everybody knows what that's, those divisions are?
Sure. So One Vision is the current owner of the FBO. Uh, they are a Part 145 station in Sioux City, Iowa. And, uh, over the past year, their obligations have been leaning more towards heavy aircraft, uh, 50-seat jets and larger. And so, uh, when John and, uh, and One Vision got together, uh, that was kinda how this whole thing sparked off. And, uh, John's passion is, uh, is small aircraft. Uh, he will still maintain the 50-seat jet in Watertown, as I understand.
Yep.
Uh, but his passion is the, the small aircraft of the world, and we have 54 of them at the airport, so.
So One Vision's not going away. That's my point. What's their role gonna be?
Uh, One Vision is looking to put up a 145 station in Watertown, correct?
Would you define 145 station?
I'm sorry. Uh, a Part 145 station is a heavy check facility, uh, for 50-seat jets and larger. Uh, so they will, uh, they will do inspections on 50-seat jets and larger, uh, inside and outside the aircraft.
Uh, uh, by purpose of asking those questions, I just want to make sure everybody understands there's still the opportunity of, we've got, I mean, great opportunity in the small end here with the new FBO operator, but we still have the opportunities on the high end, the big jets too. That is not going away.
Correct.
Yeah. Good things for our airport. And the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, right?
Uh, yes, correct. There'll be a public hearing next meeting.
But on a, a different action related to this?
This'll be, uh, the public hearing will be then to, uh, enter into the lease agreement.
Yes, but this is just the notice of intent.
Right, correct.
To do so.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item number 26, old business. Is there any old business? Councilman Vilhauer?
Um, actually, Shane, I'm not, not gonna let you quite off the hook yet. Uh, do you wanna give us an update, because I know you've been involved in this in the past? What's the latest on the, the Pheasant Lane situation out there?
Okay, so we went through a process where we invited questions or input from people that owned all the lots along Pheasant Lane, asking them what their desires were. Were they- they thinking of rezoning? Were they thinking about building? What, what did they want? And we got quite a bit of feedback from the folks, but no consensus. So basically, we've left it that each individual property owner would have to do an improvement or participate in a greater improvement in order to get building permits to improve their properties. And that's by our standard ordinance procedures and, and all of that. So Brandy Hampton is in the audience and she did most of that investigation and vetting with the public and she might be able to add a few details to that, flush that discussion out. But essentially, we aren't moving forward with any specific project at this time that'll come from interest brought to the city from private individuals.
Brandy Hampton. And Shane summed it up pretty well. So we just sent the letter out to all of the adjacent landowners and let them know what it takes to improve the right of way, what our standards are, and then gave them, through our design standards, that we're working on re-adopting and re-improving, but the means to go through if there would be a variance or of some sort that you all would allow. So it would have to be something that would be brought to you. And we'll start with that, like when they come for a building permit request. That would be the, the trigger point.
So how does this relate specifically to Mr. Mahold, who, that's what kind of drove this whole thing going back a year or so now?
Yeah, so Pat Mahold did, had the request and he rezoned his property. He rezoned it to RG Residential Garage. And then, so when it came time for him to get a building permit, we realized that, well, obviously Pheasant Lane and then he has Grous, Grous Street as well, that are both adjacent to his property. And they are both unimproved. And there also is a resolution passed by council in like nineteen eighty-two that there's no access onto North Lake Drive. So there wasn't a simple solution. And so we tried to figure out, you know, it's, that's a big task for a private landowner that usually the developer does before they walk away. But the property was transferred back then and nothing was ever improved.
So we're, there's nothing more that, at this point, that we're tasked to be doing on this as staff or city?
No, if, if Mr. Mahold wants to come forward with another, or attempt to get a building permit, we've outlined what steps he would need to do and what improvements he would need to do in order to get that permit. And that letter went out to all landowners along Pheasant Lane, so they all know what the requirements are.
Is there any other old business?
Actually, I do have a quick, quick item of update. At the last meeting, we had a presentation by the H2020 group about Highway two twelve lighting possibilities. And the decision was to put together a little task force. That group is meeting tomorrow, right? Well, one o'clock tomorrow. So hopefully I'll have something to report on that at a upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Any other old business? Councilman Albertson?
Just as a, maybe a question about procedure. We, I talked last time about the library having the furnaces, one completely out and another one marginal because it's an old one also, same type. So really, the question would be, what, what would the procedure be now to move forward on doing something about the heating of that library before next fall? And I had asked the DeeDee to just get a general idea, not, not any bids, obviously, but just a general idea about what that might cost and the bids are, or the quotes are from here to here. So I know there have to be more specifications before we could do that, but just what would the procedure, so I can report back to the library board this month now, as to how to move forward to get something done so we don't let that get away?
DeeDee and I have been talking too. And at this point, with kind of the range of the quotes, I believe the plan is at the next meeting to ask for authorization to bid the project. Then, of course, it was not budgeted. So at that point, once we know what the bids come in at, the council will probably be asked to then approve a contingency transfer as well. So that's kind of the next two steps.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, is there any new business? See none. Are there any VAs on member reports? None. Okay. We do anticipate the need to go into executive session tonight to discuss and consult with our legal counsel on contractual matters. And we do not expect to take any action when we come out. So I'll look for a motion, second, to move into executive session. Moved by Councilman Wise, second by Councilman Lalum. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We are in executive session.